Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the May 28th meeting of the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee to order. And first on the agenda, I'm gonna make introductions of the committee members. To my left is Supervisor Heidi Wegleitner. To my right is Supervisor Jason Canol. And I'm Jerry Boggs, the chairman. Next, well, we've got some staff members here. We've got Zoning Administrator Roger Lane, who I'm sure some of you have been speaking to over the last few weeks. And then we've got Assistant Zoning Director Dan Eversen. Next, we have public comment on any item not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda will have five minutes to speak. The issue may be placed on a future agenda at the chair's discretion to allow the committee to discuss the issue. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda? Great, we'll move on. Next is the public hearing portion, and first I'll go over a few rules. The committee will be... This is a public hearing for the zoning petitions and conditional use applications. Any person wishing to speak in favor or opposition must fill out a white registration form and submit it to the staff. Does everyone that wants to speak fill out a form? When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the front of the room to address the committee. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and the reason for the request. The order of registrances is as follows. After the petitioner, any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal. And that person will be given three minutes for the rebuttal. All speakers will address the committee and not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. Any persons that are disruptive will be asked to leave or be removed. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a town report with the zoning division. The deadlines for the towns to submit an action to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a future meeting. If there is public opposition or on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out the matters between the parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to the petition, the committee may act on the petition, refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes the zoning petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the zoning petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Of course, you can always attend the meeting if you desire. If the committee takes action on a conditional use permit or a CUP, this is the final action of the county. The zoning petitions which are recommended for approval will be placed on the June 6th county board agenda for action. The next ZLR committee meeting is Tuesday, June 11th. With that said, we're gonna start the public hearing. First petition is Rezone #11413, Bruce Holbeck. Is Bruce here? Bruce, come on up.
I'm great. How about yourself?
Good. Why don't you tell us about your rezon request?
So essentially, we're just looking to move a shared, or in terms of what I call it, in terms of shared lot line beyond both parcels. And we're just moving the lot line over to make it a little bit more saleable.
Very good. Anything else? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? We'll move on to Roger's report.
Yes, the Town of Verona has approved this petition. They've conditioned it upon the road right-of-way being dedicated to the public and a shared access agreement being recorded for the benefit of the two properties.
Very good. And there is also, is that the access agreement that you were...
Yes, the shared access agreement to be reported.
And that's not a surprise to you, is it, Bruce?
Nope.
No? So you're in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve with the town conditions?
And...
Second.
And we've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're all set, Bruce?
Thank you.
Next, we have Rezone #11414, Sherri Bruner. Hello, Sherri.
This is at the property of 1705 County Highway KP. We are changing from A1EX to RH1, and we're separating the residence from the farmland so our son can purchase it.
Very good. Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report, please.
Yes, the Town of Black Earth has approved this petition with no conditions.
I guess I'd entertain a motion at this time?
So move.
And a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks for coming tonight, Sherri. Brett Salza, did I say that right?
You sure did.
Very good. It's always a good start, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And are you Noah?
I am Noah, from Williamson Surveying.
Very good. So why don't you go ahead and tell us about your petition?
I have about 38 acres in the Town of Verona in the 2 to 4, the new 2 to 4 acre subdivision I wanted to create, divide off eight acres where my daughter is going to buy for the houses that be used.
The RH3 parcel in the northwest corner.
And then two 4 acre lots, RH1, or they're slightly under 4, 3.9 something, and then a 21 acre lot, RH4.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to say?
We went through the town and got approval for this, and with the deed restriction that there should be no more residential development for a period of up to seven years. And then they also requested, because there are significant trees in the parcel, that we get site plan approval to make sure the town has a voice on citing the homes, to protect the trees, and some slopes. And we've agreed to all those restrictions.
So you're in agreement with the conditions, say?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Sir? Why don't you come up and these gentlemen will let you have a seat. When you get up here, sir, just give us your name and address.
So my name is John Barnes, 1811 Spring Rose Road. I'm immediately west of the petitioner. I gave you a map of our property there. I own with my wife Prairie Spirit Wildlife Sanctuary, which is a land trust. Lived there for 47 years. The early years were spent in agriculture, the past 30 in developing a nature preserve, the past 20 working within the framework of a land trust, protecting the land in perpetuity. The only permitted practice is prairie restoration, and all other land exploitive practices are Dane County has a network of parks. The most recent $10 million purchase on Pheasant Branch was 160 acres. Prairie Spirit, as we call up this property, individually directed, is a 1000 acre biodiverse area, unique treasure involved in the development and preservation, a pre-European landscape from an historical perspective with no cost to the county, of course. We have collaborated with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Natural Resources Commission, Farm Service Agency, Dane County Naturalist, and other non-governmental organizations in formulating our land management practices through the years. See, Prairie Spirits needs buffer zones and corridors around it to take, to be truly effective in its mission. What we do here to enhance the return and preservation of native plants, insects, grassland, woodland birds, other organisms will be seriously curtailed by urban sprawl, subdivisions, and other land destructive practices. This Dane County wants to pride itself with a number of residences or businesses per square mile or its environmental enhancements, such as nature preserves, stream corridors, forest protection, green space, community-supported agriculture, and other earth protective practices. Numerous books have been written proclaiming benefits to our quality of life and well-being by keeping green spaces and natural areas nearest and engaging in them, maintaining the present zoning, which was 35, one house per 30 acre acreage. We do a pretty good job of that, and has done that for years. And it's the vertical development is the really answer to urban sprawl. And I think additional considerations really need to be taken into account, considered on this project proposed, 'cause I think there's a lot of things in place within that vicinity that would be protected to the natural elements, and I think that's very important, especially looking at the rate of development in Verona. This is an asset to everyone.
Okay, John. Is that everything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. We've also got... Wait a minute. Brent Darley?
I gave you the map there.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the map. I believe that'll be it. I'll give Brett and Noah three minutes now to rebuttal, for their rebuttal, or if you want to.
The only thing that I would add is that we went through the town plan that has been changed to 2 to 4 zoning, and we've also done additional restrictions to protect the natural environment that we're proposing to develop. This had the possibility of, what, 19 lots, and we're requesting three additional lots and the existing home sites, so...
Okay. Brett? Thank you. And are you aware that when there is opposition to the petition, it will be postponed?
Yes.
Okay. And it'll be picked up on the, what is it, June 6th meeting or June 11th? Okay, we'll move on to Roger's report.
Yes, the Town of Verona has approved this petition with a set of conditions that Lot 1 be limited to one land division after seven years. Lot 4 shall be limited to be divided into no more than four lots after seven years. The home site shall avoid oak and hickory trees over 18 inches in diameter and slopes exceeding 15 percent, and building, siding on Lot 2, 3, and 4 shall be approved by the Town of Verona prior to construction.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the conditions? Okay, as you know, there was opposition, so I, at this time, would someone like to make a motion of postponement?
Move to postpone.
And a second, please? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor of postponement?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any questions about this?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to petition #11416. Maryland Zurbackin Living Trust. Is someone here representing Maryland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Bill Creed from Williamson Surveying, and this is Adam Carrico from Carrico Engineering.
Hi, Adam.
Hello.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us why you want your rezon?
So this is a rezone that's being requested for a 27 lot subdivision, and we're changing the various zonings to fit the conservancy areas and the different lot sizes that we're proposing.
Very good.
So the concept plan went through the Town of Verona and was approved, and there are a list of additional requirements when we get to the preliminary plat stage, so I guess this is our next step in our goal.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Okay, we do have Brent Darley registered in opposition, wishing to speak in opposition. Brett, would you like to come up, please?
Yes, please.
Thanks, gentlemen, for making room for Brett.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brent Darley, as she said. My wife is Dana Resop, and her parents, Meredith and William Resop, own the farm immediately to the west and to the southwest of plat that is under consideration there. I wanted to speak on this. We actually missed the Town of Verona meetings about this zoning request, 'cause her parents were out of town due to a family emergency, so we didn't see the notice until after the April 11th approval. So I'd like to just read my remarks, I'll read as I can, it's just easier to read it rather than trying to say it.
That's fine. It works.
So they, my in-law is on the 320 acre farm to the east and the southeast, adjacent on Highway G, and their farm is at the 2200 Brandancy Lane, which I don't think is just off the picture, off to the west, which is also called Dish Drive, I believe on the county maps it's still called Dish Drive, but the town calls it Brandancy Lane. My wife and I have lived at the farm for the past six summers, and we're in the process of purchasing the farmhouse and renovating it, and will eventually be purchasing the rest of the farmland with the intention of continuing to farm it. They raise Angus beef cattle there. And our family is opposed to the proposed zoning change to that adjacent property for two reasons. We're concerned about the loss of productive farmland, just in the Dane, in the county of Dane, and the increased runoff, flooding in the creek that this development might produce. Of all the fields on our farm, the one on that north side of Highway G is the most productive of any of our fields due to the excellent soil condition there along the valley stream, and also due to the sunlight exposure on that south-facing slope. The parcel under zoning consideration is on the same slope, and I assume it's equally productive farmland. The latest report from Wisconsin's Farmland Preservation Program states that Wisconsin loses an average of 100,000 acres of farmland every year. I'm sure you're always aware that every time a farm field is rezoned for residential housing, that farmland is lost forever, and so we're very concerned about the loss of any productive farmland. We're also concerned about the increased rainwater runoff and flooding this zoning change will cause to the valley stream. When my wife and her family moved to the farm almost 30 years ago, the stream only flooded that Dish Drive, or we call it Brandancy Lane Bridge that goes over the creek, only flooded about once every three years, but the rate of flooding has increased noticeably since then. During the past six years, while I've been living on the farm, these flooding events have increased in frequency such that it overflows our bridge three or four times every year. And last September, the flooding was so great above the bridge on Highway G, so it's where, the bridge is right there in the middle of that south part of the parcel there, where the stream goes underneath the highway. The water backed up behind that bridge and then overflowed Highway G to the northeast of the bridge in washed-out sections of the highway, and it took three weeks for repairs to be made to the highways while the highway was closed. The pastures to the east of our farm also floods after most heavy rainstorm and sometimes stranding the cattle there in the floodwater, and I believe the frequency of floods is due to housing developments further up the valley on Highway G. All of this increased runoff is also causing flooding in the Sugar River downstream, 'cause it's a tributary of the Sugar River. And for the proposed zoning change, the developer plans to build 27 houses on approximately 60 acres. All of those have, you know, you have the streets, the impermeable roofs, the driveways, sidewalks, and the manicured green grass lawns will, I believe, dramatically increase the runoff into the stream and make the flooding situation worse for us. I do realize that part of the parcel is to be zoned as a conservancy district on the southern end there, but this section is already in the stream bed, and I don't believe it provides any infiltration of groundwater, infiltration of water to keep it out of the stream, preventing flooding. So I don't think that the conservancy area is, I think the only reason it's there is that you just can't build houses where it floods every time it rains. And so I think that's why they want to zone it that way. So my family urges the committee to deny this zoning change request and preserve that parcel for farmland if you however feel that the public is best served by permanently converting this productive section of farmland to residential housing. We do urge you to consider rezoning it, or I assume it wouldn't be you who'd be doing that, it might go back to go through the process again, but consider rezoning it to be a rural homes district zoning, just to increase the size of the acreage per housing lot. I hope that having more space like that would allow more rainwater infiltration so that the flooding of the stream can be minimized. And in looking up Highway G, I don't see any developments that are quite this dense as 27 lots in a 50 to 60 acre area. I just don't see any development that dense, and I think it's more dense, developments should be less dense on that highway. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your remarks. Would you like to make a rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Again, Adam Carrico, Carrico Engineering, appreciate the opportunity to provide a rebuttal As you know, the town has spent a considerable amount of time to develop their future land use plan based on the town's wishes to allow for some future development. I know the town has some areas that, next to, say, the city of Fitchburg, city of Madison and that, where there's less opportunities for development for the town, and so this kind of southwest area of the Town of Verona was kind of pegged for some future development. So they did change this area into their future land use map into the 2 to 4, one dwelling for 2 to 4 acres. So the developer of this parcel is interested in any development here. We've met with all of the committees within the town, including the natural and recreational committee, in talks with them in the idea of restoring that southern parcel there to a native prairie. Right now, it's in, well, the whole area is obviously farmed and farm field, so not only with the restrictions for stormwater management, you know, we feel that the potential for flooding and stormwater runoff will actually improve from this site, not only with, I've met with the county stormwater guys, and near the north end of those, the conservancy areas, we're planning for a couple of dry basins to essentially treat the stormwater runoff, and we won't be able, the ordinance states we're not going to be able to increase the runoff from the site, so adding impervious surfaces there isn't going to necessarily affect the rate of runoff there, and I guess in our, in my opinion, restoring that area from farm field to a native prairie where those types of plants will ultimately aid in soaking up more of that water, that it would potentially help the flooding downstream.
You've got 30 seconds, Adam.
So that's kind of our stance there on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comments. And again, if folks are aware that this will be postponed according to committee rules. Okay? So Roger, your report?
Yes, the Town of Verona has recommended approval with a host of conditions. They ask that the, they require that the developer enter into a developer's agreement that would, which would be approved by the town. The subdivision would be limited to the creation of 31 lots, which would be 27 residential lots, and for conservation, outlots for stormwater detention. They're required to conduct a wetland delineation report, also prepare a preliminary stormwater management plan. They're required to do road engineering, prepare a covenants and restrictions to be approved by the town. That's to include a buffer area along Spring Rose Road. There is to be a financial agreement approved by the Town of Verona for the maintenance of the outlots, which include the stormwater features, and the subdivision plat be reported with registered deeds.
Thanks for your report, Roger. If you have any questions about this petition, you can contact Roger next week or this week, or whenever it's convenient. But according to our rules, we will have to postpone this petition, so at this time I'm going to ask for a motion of postponement.
Move to postpone.
And a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. The petition is postponed. Move on to Rezone #11417, Dale and Dwight Houston. Hey, Dale. I assume you're Dale.
I'm actually Dennis Richardson. I work for Dale and Dwight Houston.
Well, then thanks for making that clear.
Basically, the Houston's own, pretty big chunk of land there. They're looking to split off two acres for one of the sons, so he can move out, get out of the city and move out on the farm with them.
Very good. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Roger, your report?
Yes, the Town of Cottage Grove has recommended approval of this petition. They have amended the lot size, and they have also suggested some conditions. The lot was actually shifted over to the east a bit to give a space in between the existing house and the future development. The lot was configured to a two-acre lot as presented. They would like a deed notice be placed on the property on the remaining 40 acre, the quarter-quarter section, to prohibit any further residential development in that area. And then they would like a path road to be dedicated to the public and have the surveyor replace any survey markers that have been dislocated.
Thank you. And are you in agreement with all those conditions?
We are.
Okay. At this time, then, I'd like a motion, please?
Move to approve with conditions.
And a second, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this petition? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're approved. Next, we have Ski Lane Properties, Rezone #1141. Next we have Ski Lane Properties, rezone number one-one-four-one-eight. And we've got Tom Jacobs registered wishing to speak in support. And we've got, okay, why don't you go ahead, you're Tom?
I am.
Nice to have you here, Tom. Why don't you tell us the reason for your request?
Sure, I actually bought that parcel from the original farm family about ten, six years ago. And they were, the family was actually living on that parcel, but the area around it has completely developed in the sense that we've got, you can see the trampoline building there. The whole novation campus, of course, is zone C-one. I own the building across the street, which is zone C-two. The parcel at twenty-seven forty-seven, which is right next to it, got zoned C-one, even though I bought both of those parcels from the farm family. But I think at the time, the novation center had designs on those parcels and, you know, they just got one change and not the other one. So I'm, I actually bought it to build a new building over there for my business, but then I decided to sell the business and now I've got several people interested, but it just seems to be hard to get over the fact that it's zoned residential one, one house and I'd like to just make that in conformance with all the zoning around it. So help sell it. And of course, any plan that comes up would be subject to, you know, the review of, of the county and I think the city of Pittsburgh is, is going to be taking that over. So, you know, with those understandings, I'm hereby submitting this appeal.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
No.
Okay, we do have some people registered in opposition.
Aye.
Maria Dan, you wish to speak in opposition, are you here? How are you tonight, Maria?
I am well.
That's good.
I live in the condominiums just to, I guess, if we're looking to the north of this parcel. Here, where the tan roofs are. And at this point, I say table it until we know what wants to be there. So, because where it's located, it's, right now, you know, it's a nice quiet street. We have a hundred and eighty-five units going up just across from the trampoline park, starting this year. So that is, as far as the amount of traffic goes in the area, we don't even know how that's going to affect it. So if anything gets built there, it would be at least nothing more than three stories and maybe retail on the bottom. Or offices, because in this general area, we do not need more traffic.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Next we have Michael Pekowski, did I say that correctly?
Yes, Michael Pekowski.
Thank you, Michael.
And the secretary of this Ski Lane Home and Association, we are the, building the gray one to the, to the right of the brown one, above the parcel.
Just north of the parcel.
North of the parcel.
Sir, and your name is?
My name's Brian, I was registered as opposed to.
Oh, Brian Miller?
Yep.
Gotcha, okay.
So the petition is vague, doesn't say what's being planned. And so we would like to know what's being planned, how many trees are going to be cut, how is it going to affect the value of our property? Because with the trees in front and the green area, it's a very desirable property that we have. And so we are opposing to any, any buildings and the construction other than residential.
Okay, is that everything?
Yeah.
And I'd just like to say that I moved there in two thousand and ten and we've lost an incredible amount of green space just to development, like the trampoline park, that huge white building that's a few years old, it's actually changed hands once. And then that huge parking lot, it's like the Meriter, the Meriter campus or like an office building, just humongous. And there's just also a senior campus just a little more to the right that's off the screen and then a hundred and sixty unit apartments. There's just nothing, it's just going to be all concrete and, and it's a, you know, that's our southern exposure and it really is nice land. And I could see if someone wanted to build a few homes on there, but I just don't want another big office park or, or anything. There's just, there's just not a green area left.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Next we have Kirsten Constan, is that you?
Yes, Kirsten. Hi.
Hi. And you are?
I am Maggie Miller, his daughter.
Okay.
Maggie is.
Good to have you here, Maggie.
My neighbor across the hallway, we have a pretty tight-knit community in our building. I moved there, I'm also in the same Ski Lane condos with the gray roof. And essentially, I bought the condo about ten years ago, recently married and with plans, I, I wanted to buy a place in that area because I was working, I got a new job at a school in which that was the attendance area. I wanted my child, my one-day child to be able to go or children to be able to attend that school. And the moment I walked in and I saw, you know, all these huge windows with southern exposure and just pure green leaves and trees and grass, I mean, obviously, we're looking out at somebody else's land. And so in that sense, I don't feel I have any right to say, oh, you know, you can't, you shouldn't be mowing your lawn or give us a beautiful view. However, we bought it with the understanding that it was residential. And as, as they mentioned, you know, if it were going to be some homes there, I can imagine that would still be beautiful to look at. However, I have a four-year-old child now, I'm now a single mom and I work. And to move, I, I essentially wouldn't want to live there with any sort of commercial. I can't even imagine anything commercial being built there other than something that looked like a house, like maybe a little candle shop, which I doubt is what the intention is, you know, there's already, you know, we moved in with the understanding that the, the commercial properties that are already there are there. And, and like, like Brian said, you know, we've already had quite a bit of development, but I just keep telling myself, okay, as long as it's not, I'm not staring at this trampoline place, there's still beautiful green view for us. It's a very healing, well-lit space. And I, I have my sister who's moved into the same building five years ago. She helps me a great deal with childcare with my son. My cousin moved into the same building, they share the third quad on the far end and I send my son down the block, everybody in the area knows my son, hi Delaney, how's it going? You know, we have a community there and I know that I'm not the only one that would most likely move if this was zoned in any other way other than how it is. And I, I really fear for my, the property value, like if I were to move, I don't think I would get even what I paid for it, which was, was very fair, you know. And I've invested a great deal of time and energy in the community and the neighborhood, building relationships. I feel that my presence makes a difference. I believe that all the neighbors that I've invested time getting to know and spending time with, making decisions for our, our shared neighborhood is important. And I feel that uprooting any one of us would be a problem. You know, all those little tiny roots and relationships that you build with your neighbors over the years make a difference in how people feel in their day-to-day lives. And I personally wouldn't feel comfortable sending my child even out to play in the, in the tiny little yard that is there, it's sort of a hill that goes down. I was scared when he was one to two to send him out there on his own because I thought he would tumble down. Now he's old enough to play out there being almost four by himself. I can look out the window and say, oh, there's my son. If he happens to go over into the yard a little bit, which he rarely does, it's not really a problem. He can swing on the little swing that's in the tree, you can't see it there, but there's a couple of swings that my sister's put up. My sister's invested tons of time in clearing out the forest and made a little path. She's done gardening there for years. I mean, we've spent a lot of time investing in this community and we know all our neighbors, all their names. We've spent hours, hundreds and hundreds, probably thousands of hours, you know, fixing up the place in meetings, deciding just like this what to do about everything. And it's just not something I would want to lose personally. I wouldn't feel comfortable anymore sending my son out to play there, you know. There's probably going to be a parking lot or not to mention people looking through windows at him. I mean, I just, it would, it would completely change the vibe for that entire area. And I don't think, and we're one of twelve units and all of them look out at that property. So that's probably, I'm trying to think how many people just in our building, not to mention the other building across the way. I mean, I'm probably speaking for twenty units, really, that's affecting twenty people or families versus one owner who would like the convenience of being able to change that zoning in order to make money as the neighboring properties are able.
You've got thirty seconds.
All right, so that's really all I have to say. I guess for me, it's more of appeal and appeal to the heart. I don't know really what I would do if I had to leave here. This is, I'm very dependent on this home and my neighbors and my family that lives there. So I thank you so much for your time and I urge you to question the rezoning of this property.
Thank you both for your opinions, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, Tom, you've got three minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I appreciate that the view is nice for the people to the north and that the children can play on the empty lot. However, what I'm intending to do is consistent with what the South Hill neighborhood plan is. In, in other words, I would work with you to develop or sell it to, would be subject to the city of Pittsburgh's plan for the South Hill or South Hill neighborhood. And any sort of plan that, that, or use that, that came up as a result of my sale of property would be subject to that entity's review and of course, subject to your review. So it basically, whether it's C-one or R-one or, or whatever, whoever's coming in is going to have to go through the approval process. And I just want to make it C-one so it's consistent with that. You can see it's very developed all the way around it. And so I would encourage you to go ahead and change the zoning and then we'll address the use so that everybody is, you know, able to get involved in the process and we know what it is.
And I think the staff will encourage you to work with the neighborhood on that.
Pardon?
I, I, I'm sure the staff will encourage you to work with the neighborhood on that.
Oh, sure.
But for right now, according to our rules, we do have to postpone. But first we have Roger's report.
Yes, the town of Madison has approved this with no conditions, however, staff had some concerns. This area is slated to be developed for commercial employment area per the South Hill neighborhood plan. One of the things that was absent with this petition was a development plan. And the development plan would show the placement of the building, the parking area, stormwater detention. Because, but due to the fact that everything's speculative, there are concerns about the, how this will develop appropriately. Staff recommends that, that the site plan before any construction begins on this property, that site plan approval would need to be obtained by the city of Pittsburgh as well as the town of Madison. That would ensure that the aesthetics would be appropriate and you would have not one but two municipalities reviewing the development of this area. This is somewhat unique because most commercial rezones have a development plan associated, so this is somewhat unique.
Thank you, Roger. So again, according to our rules, we are going to postpone this petition, so I'd ask for a, a motion of postponement, please.
So moved.
Second.
You got a motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And if you have any questions about the progress of this petition, you can contact Roger. Move on to rezone number one-one-four-one-nine, Ronald Trakti. And Ronald also has a CUP request. But first we'll take up the rezone. Hi. Hello?
Hello.
Please tell us who you are.
I'm Ron Trakti.
Okay, Ron.
And this is Natasha Iverson. She presently owns the grooming operation.
All right. Okay, tell us about your, your rezone first.
We're rezoning because that's what Brian Standing said I had to do.
In order to get into the zoning district, it would allow a, a pet boarding facility.
That's correct, that's correct, Roger.
That's what I thought you said.
Yes. Yes, so that's why we're requesting a rezone in order that we can put up a kennel, a dog kennel facility.
Okay, all right. Did you fill out a form?
I did.
Okay.
I wasn't sure of the procedure.
So is that it, that your report then, Rod?
Well, I, I, I'll be happy to expound a little bit.
It's up to you, you've got, you know.
Okay, we, we, with the grooming operation that Natasha and others presently do, there is much enthusiasm for a kennel operation to go along with it. People are very possessive about their pets and who takes care of them, who grooms them and who boards them.
Excuse me for a second, we're talking about, we're just talking rezone here.
Oh, rezone?
Yeah.
Oh.
Rezone over. We'll get to the CUP next.
That's fine, no, that, that.
Those are your remarks?
Those are my remarks.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak in support of this rezone? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the rezone? Hearing none, Roger, your report.
Yeah, the town of Alabamian has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is recommending that a deed restriction be placed on the property to prohibit further division of the property, just based on the fact that the, the proposed zoning district, RM sixteen, does have a potential of dividing this property in half.
Very good. Any questions, comments? And I guess I entertain a motion on the rezone.
Move to approve with the condition of the deed restriction.
And a second, please. Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Rod, you can tear right into the CUP now.
All right, thank you. As I mentioned, the grooming operation and the, the customers that use that grooming operation have, there's been a, a request for Natasha and others to, why don't you get a kennel operation? And that was a long-term goal anyway of both Natasha and Amanda, who's going to be the general manager. And we have tentatively decided to put it maybe a hundred and fifty feet north of the existing, the existing grooming facility, which is in a garage. So it, it'll be, it'll be quite tight to the, to the house and the pole barn that, that is presently there. I can't tell. Yeah, that's, thank you, Roger. It'll just be, yeah, it'll just be, no, not even that far by, you know, and over to, toward the east. There you go. There you go, right. And the building that we are proposing will look rural, high, high pitched. The kennels that we're proposing are really called suites. Natasha was insistent that we, we insulate each individual kennel and also the ceiling in each individual kennel to minimize dog barking noise. Also, the, the layout of it is such that dogs can't see, they can't see other dogs. They can see out and go out anytime they want and they can see in, but all they'll see is a partition wall or something. Why? Because that, that greatly minimizes, once dogs see each other, they start, that's what starts them going. We, it, it, we thought it was an ideal position because of the, well, there's a, there's a stone quarry immediately across the street and I believe Wanda is the closest neighbor to the north about eleven hundred feet. And, and she's enthusiastic to have this facility there. It's not big, it's only nineteen kennels. kennels. Let's see. Oh, we anticipate an added traffic flow of six cars a day with this operation. This is above the grooming traffic that presently drives up to Natasha's house. So, so we feel the impact won't be severe at all. We aren't, we're going to use the same drive to the house and the pole barn to come in, and then a separate drive going up to the facility. And then we were very well received at Town of Albion with the proposal, and a couple people expressed their appreciation to have it. So, and that's about all I know.
Okay, Ron. Natasha, did you have anything you wanted to say about the CUP?
No, I guess he's kind of covered it all.
Alright.
Yeah.
That's fine. Would anyone like to speak in support of this CUP? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Roger, your report, please.
Yes, the town of Albion has approved this conditional use permit with one condition. Any future expansion of the site will need Town of Albion Town Board approval. Staff is suggesting that the conditional use permit be approved with five conditions.
And a motion, please.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Your CUP and your rezon are all approved.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Next, we have petition rezon 11420, WTS Holdings LLC. Hi.
Hello.
Did you fill out a form?
I didn't think so. As the agent indicated I had to.
Okay. They're over there in the desk before you leave.
Alright, I'll fill it up for you.
Fill it up before you leave and give it to staff.
I am Justin Temple with National Construction, agent of Al Strauss, owner of WTS Holdings. We are looking for a rezon from MFR 08, which is a multifamily. It's a HC-heavy commercial at ninety-nine West Beltline Highway. There's a small sliver in the back of the, Al owns the property on the corner. There. The building on the corner, there's a small rectangle piece that marked HC on the plan that was a little piece left in there. We're just trying to get it rezoned so we can do an addition onto the building.
Very good. Anything else? Anything you'd like to say?
Just that I purchased the property with that existing extraneous piece here, August of last year. The prior property owners had purchased it from a neighbor and apparently just never gone through the process. They operated a car lot and just parked cars on it and apparently never saw fit to get it all absorbed into the main parcel.
Okay, very good. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger, your report.
Yes, the town of Madison has approved this petition with no conditions.
And a motion, please.
Move to approve.
And a second, please. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Gentlemen, you're all set.
Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Reinstedt and Peggy Jacobson. Are you Peggy? Okay.
I'm here representing my mother, Elizabeth Reinstedt, and she lives at nineteen twenty-four County Truckee in Town of Dunkirk. And we want to rezon the FP thirty-five to RR two, separating existing residents from the farm line.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this petition? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Roger, your report, please.
Yes, the town of Dunkirk has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting that the condition be placed on this property requiring that the septic system be shown on the final certified survey map. The Department of Health has no information on the location of the septic system.
Can I assume you went over this with Peggy?
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve with the condition.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And next, we have petition twenty-four sixty-six, William Garfoot. Mr. Garfoot, hi.
How are you doing?
I'm well. How are you doing?
So, Mr. Cartman and I have owned this property for thirty years approximately. We, we had a conditional use for airstrip for twenty-five years, been in existence. It's a grass strip on top of a hill. The reason for the change to the new CUP is that we're exercising our land development options in the town of Springdale, so we're adding another pilot to the airstrip. And where those little Xs are, that's where one of the pilots would be living. And so we're just moving forward to get them. So they got permission and are part owner and part of the CUP for using the airstrip. We're kind of basically updating the CUP. It's been there for over twenty-five years. We had one complaint from one of the neighbors. He said we're going to have to move the airstrip closer to him so we could see airplanes from there. Other than that, we try to keep it quiet and, you know, just fly when it's nice weather.
Anything else you'd like to say?
We spent an amazing amount of time discussing this at the town level, probably twenty hours. And we've come up with a whole bunch of conditions. The conditions that are on there, we can, we can try to live with for a while. If not, we'll come back to try to revise them or update them or something like that. So.
Very good. Would anyone like to speak in support of this petition? You can stay there for now, Bill. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? And step forward and identify yourself. I'm sorry, now you will have to move.
I'm in support.
You're in support, okay. Please give us your name and address.
I live right next to the conditional use permit there, and that permit was granted over twenty-some years. And we met all the conditions by Dane County back in the day when we applied for it. And since then, now they want to put twenty-one conditions on us. And there are several airstrips with conditional use permits in Dane County, and I don't think any of them have any conditions on. And we've never had any complaints on it. And, you know, some people want to say it lowers the taxes having an airstrip, but every year when I go down to fight my tax bill, they always say, "Well, you live in an area in Springdale with valuable land." So I said, "Well, I live next to an airstrip." And I said, "That doesn't make any difference." So, you know, I don't think the taxes was an issue there. And, you know, usually our, our opposition really bought land next to us after we had already purchased that land. So, and was applying for an airstrip at that time. So, I guess that's all I really have to say.
Are you Dennis Cartman?
Yes.
Okay, I've got your form here. Thank you. Your form.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And then we've got a lady in the back that would like to speak in opposition. Is that true?
I did.
And your name, please?
Ellen Bun.
Did you fill out a form, Ellen?
I did. So I'm speaking in opposition to the CUP as it was proposed and presented at the town board by the applicant. They keep changing the proposal, so I'm going to speak to what the whole entity of the proposal, although it may be different from now than it was. I want to speak in support of the twenty-one conditions that were proposed by the Springdale Town Board. So my family is the farm landowners to the immediate southwest of the airstrip where it says the word Bun. The two resident landowner pilots right now under CUP number ninety-nine have three operational aircraft and ten aircraft operations per day. That's like five round trips. They also have the potential to sell five single-family dwelling lots between them. Selling the land to anyone else will terminate their current CUP number nine ninety-nine, and that's why they're applying for a new CUP, because there is a potential buyer of one of the lots. So, looking into the future, if they were to develop all of their lots, so eight dwelling units at the airstrip, if they housed resident landowner pilots, or if any one of those dwelling units were to be co-owned by a group of pilots, that could result in at least an eight times minimal increase in the number of pilots. And that could increase the likelihood in good weather that they would actually achieve the ten aircraft operations per day, twenty per weekend or seventy per week, which is a lot if you looked around our neighborhood and saw who else was there. There's horses and farmland and quiet residences, as well as where it says Dane County, there is the Dane County Donald Park. And, and there is a difference between an airplane flying over the town at a high altitude and one that is landing and taking off over the surrounding properties. It affects us both in privacy, noise, and, and safety. So, the second thing I wanted to talk about was property value. As proposed by the applicants, the CUP would give added value to the residential lots associated with the airstrip as the buyers would have the opportunity to join an airstrip subdivision. Simultaneously, we as contiguous landowners would need to disclose the increased usage on the airstrip, and we believe that that would lower our property values and also decrease the pool of potential people who would want to buy our property. We have a certified organic farm. Many people would not choose to locate next to an active airstrip. And then finally, I wanted to talk about the Springdale Land Use Plan. So I'm actually a member of the Plan Commission in Springdale, but I recused myself because of my proximity to this proposal. CUP number nine ninety-nine predates the effective date of the land use plan, and an eight times increase in the usage would be inconsistent with the agricultural and residential goals of the land use plan. And it would also be inconsistent with the precedent in our township. Normally, CUPs are approved to meet the immediate needs of the landowner, not the maximum dreams of what they would want. And so, we are supporting the twenty-one conditions put forward by the town of Springdale, which enable the two gentlemen you just heard from, who are co-owners of the airstrip easement, to, they would be doubling the number of pilots from two to four, increasing the number of aircraft that are operational from three to six, and it would give the town the control over the future growth of the airstrip. So one of the things that they haven't talked about and keeps changing, at the Plan Commission public hearing, and again at the Town Board public hearing, they talked about having not only the resident landowner pilots using the airstrip, but also any guests of those residents, and also any other pilot who wanted to fly into the airstrip and take advantage of some of the other things so one might enjoy in the area, like a football game at UW or a restaurant. That changes in our minds from a small private airstrip for the benefit of the landowners to something much bigger. And that's why they, Mr. Cartman just said that the other airstrips in Dane County, there's thirty-one airstrips in Dane County, three are the large airports at Verona, Middleton, and of course, the regional airport. There are nine conditional use permits on airstrips, Garfoot's being one of them. But I think I'm correct that all of those CUPs were created in the early nineties? And my contention is that were those to come up now as the density of people living in rural areas has increased, there would probably be more conditions on those as well. So the twenty-one conditions advanced by the town were done thoughtfully, also in response to Mr. Garfoot stating at the Plan Commission public hearing that he has already violated some of the conditions of CUP number nine ninety-nine. So the wording was very carefully advanced by our town, knowing how the usage has been in the past. Complaining about one plane is very different from what might happen if there were many, many unlimited usages up to ten a day.
Thank you. And you've made your opinions known to the township?
Yes.
Alright. And next, we've got Linda Hughes. Is she here? You're available for information. You all wish to speak?
This is for, for the next-
Oh, that's for the next one, I'm sorry. Nancy Bonn. Or Henry, Henry Bonn.
I was here just to defer to that.
Okay. That's fine, Henry. Sorry to bother you. Alright, okay. Any further people wishing to speak at all? Okay. And Bill, you've got three minutes for rebuttal.
The town more likes you speaking in favor of it than opposing it. So, I mean, I don't really have to say. We've been there for a long time, and it's a small grass strip. We're pretty limited to what type of airplane we fly out of there and stuff like that.
Okay.
I've been around and, and talked to all the neighbors prior to when I did it the first time and second time, and none of the neighbors that have joined land other than her have any problems whatsoever. As a matter of fact, she went around to try to get them to sign papers against it, and nobody would even talk to her to sign them, so.
Okay.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the concerns and stuff like that. I don't try to avoid people. We're pilots, we're professional people. We usually just fly when it's really nice.
Very good, Bill.
And the other thing is that, that the limiting factor to this, it doesn't matter if there's a hundred airplanes there, ten pilots, twenty pilots, limiting factor that the rules that we've agreed to a long time ago, and the new rules, is ten operations per day, which is, an operation is one landing and one takeoff. So that's, I mean, that's what our rules are.
Okay, and you've agreed to abide by those rules?
But, like I said, you know, we, moving forward, if, if we want to come back to revisit this, you know, we're willing to accept these conditions at this time, but possibly in the future come back to change them.
Certainly right, Bill.
And the other thing, if this gets moved to the July or June eleventh meeting, I'm not going to be here.
Actually, it'll be on the, I think I said June eleventh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be in Canada fishing with my wife. So Mr. Cartman or Fred Rundy will be the other pilot that's involved in this and has permission to speak on my behalf.
That'll work. Alright. Thanks, Bill. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Hearing none. Roger, your report, please.
Yes, I've received two letters, one from a Barbara Namenworth, and she asked that to be recorded into the record.
Okay.
And also, we've received a letter from Ellen Bun with regards to this conditional use permit. Both of those letters are at your table. The town of Springdale has approved this conditional use permit with twenty-one conditions. It appears that the letter content is requesting that the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee approve the conditional use permit with those twenty-one conditions. Staff has suggested eleven conditions. I believe they're not necessary because they're all incorporated at some point, or even the town conditions are more restrictive. So I don't think you need a duplicate set. Staff is comfortable suggesting approval of this conditional use permit with the twenty-one conditions that the town has requested.
Thank you. And then, I would assume we want to move to move these into the record?
Oh, if, if you would like to do that.
Yes. First, I'd like a motion to put these two letters into the record, please.
So move.
And a second, please.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please put those in the record, Roger.
Okay.
And next, I entertain a motion to, to approve this petition or the CUP with the conditions. Or no, we've got to postpone because we had opposition.
Unless Mrs. Bun doesn't want to oppose that.
I assume you're opposing this petition, Mrs. Bun, right?
No, I was opposing not concluding the twenty-one conditions of the town.
You would be in support of approval with twenty-one conditions?
So then I guess we can make a mo, we can, we can move to, to approve it with the twenty-one conditions. Is that all? You're fine with that? Okay, then we don't have to postpone.
Then I can go fishing.
You were going to go anyway.
I'm going to. I'm going anyway.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna move approval with twenty-one conditions.
And a second, please?
Or the town conditions?
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying the staff conditions are just redundant, so if we move the town conditions, we're good?
That's just fine.
Okay. I, let me have a question.
Let's take a vote first, or do you want me to...
Well, I think we have to talk on the basis.
Okay, go on.
Yes.
I just wanna be clear that nobody else has registered opposition if we take this up tonight.
That's correct.
I have a written communication from, are you Ellen Bun? Okay. So you support approval with the town conditions, and we have no other opposition as of record at this point?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So Supervisor Reglander made the motion, it was seconded by Supervisor Canone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
So the next thing it does is goes to the county on the sixth?
No, no.
No, it's done.
It's done. It's all approved.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay. And we'll move on to CUP twenty-four sixty-four.
This was postponed at the April thirtieth Zoning and Land Regulation Committee due to no town action since that time. The town has approved the conditional use permit. They approved it with the standard conditions, with one additional condition, and that pertaining to lighting, that the lighting shall not cause a nuisance to the neighboring residences. So staff is suggesting that the petition be approved with fourteen conditions.
Very good, thank you, Roger. And we've got Linda Hughes and Bruce Bosbitt registered for information only. So if anyone has any questions, we may check with them this time. Okay. I guess at this time I would ask for a motion to approve with the conditions.
Move to approve with the conditions.
And a second, please? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. You're all approved. Okay.
Yeah, they're both in the town of Springdale. The first one is under the name of Robert Boyer. Currently, the existing parcel is one lot that consists of four point nine acres. The prospective buyer is looking to divide the parcel into two lots. Both lots will have the adequate minimum road frontage of sixty-six feet. And then this proposal was given to Brian Standing with regards to comp plan review, and the only comment that he made was as long as both lots remain two acres in size, this land division would appear to be consistent with adopted town slash county plan.
Motion, please?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Next, we have CSM William Garfoot.
Yes. Bill, who was just here, is proposing a three lot certified survey map. Current zoning is A1, so it's like the one before, there is no recent petition involved with this one. Yeah, two lots are being proposed for residential purposes. Brian Standing has reviewed this as far as home sites created to date, he writes none. Development should avoid resource protection corridors and clear space for aircraft. If proposed, two lot CSM is approved, this will exhaust development potential for this property.
Thank you. Motion, please?
Move.
And a second, please?
I'll second, I have a question.
And discussion.
So, do we have to do anything else regarding Brian's comments?
No, he's just identifying that there are two splits available to offer those two home sites. There is gonna be an, even though both lots will have the minimum frontage, you know, for the sixty-six feet, the access for both lots is gonna come via this shared access Eastman to serve lots one and two. And then the runway, the airstrip, this is back here, no.
Here, there's Mr. Garfoot's house right here. The airstrip kinda goes right through here.
Oh, okay. Is that...
Oh, okay. I could, let's see here.
Should be an aerial map attached. Well, no, there should be an aerial map with that, with that report.
So the two lots would be like this.
Oh, okay.
Sure. The Xs will be where the proposed houses will be.
So is that, you gonna live there? Is Garfoot gonna live there?
Mr. Garfoot lives currently just right here currently. Mr. Cartman lives right here. They're looking at developing two lots here with a future development there, and Mr. Cartman is looking at putting two houses here at some point in time. Right now, it is limited to only four pilots.
Where's the driveway, Andy?
Driveway is presently right here.
Oh.
And so they will not put any additional, they will come around Bill's house to gain access.
So what is that, a farm road then?
It's a private road.
It'd be a private driveway.
It'd be a private, okay.
A shared driveway.
I'm sure he has somebody in mind for those, some buddies or something like that.
Yes.
Who he operates, I can tell. I don't know the guy.
Yeah, but Brian, you know, Brian makes the comment, you know, if two lot CSM is approved, this will exhaust all development potential of this property, so.
Okay. All right. Do we wanna go over?
Yeah.
Yep, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got a motion, a second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Well, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks for keeping me on track. Next, we, under other business or whatever?
The only item, as you could see, as we're preparing conditional use permits and rezoning, we separated the rezones and the conditional use permits, so there will be two staff reports, one for the rezon and one for the CUP. You'll see that the conditional use permit staff report has got a little more robust, and that's for a little more legal reason. We have to substantiate the conditions, so...
You mean findings affect?
Findings affect, that is correct. So that's what's...
Thank you.
All right. And you wanna make any comments about your hearing materials?
Yes, I could make a lot of comments.
I mean, I can, I can just provide, provide just a kind of a one, two, or three.
Since that's something that came to my attention, that I don't...
On record?
So...
It's under other business.
So one of the items is, is that the county is responsible for reclamation plans. So back in two thousand and one, the state required all mineral extraction sites to reclaim their property instead of just leaving a gravel area pit that they're reclaiming to agriculture or some other purpose. So we administer that requirement for the state. There is, Yar material owns a quarry just, just east of Highway twelve as you're going out of Middleton, and the town of Springfield, which has opted out of county zoning, recently allowed them to expand their non-conforming site. In order to do so, they need a reclamation plan. That reclamation plan was submitted to Dane County. As required, as a state requirement, we're to notify people in the area that what the reclamation is, it's going to be back to agriculture. So we have a plan that says this entire area, after it's done being used as a quarry, it's gonna go back to agriculture. Well, we're required to send out notices to people. The neighboring residents were very surprised to see that the quarry was expanding in that area, and also how did they obtain approvals for that? It was observed that they expanded past their approved limits, and the town of Springfield has rescinded their approval for their expansion, and so the reclamation plan is kinda set on hold until they figure out how far the boundaries are.
But just to back up a little bit, they do have a reclamation plan on file that does include some areas in our adjacent subdivision. It's just this new plan modifies the final proposed contours drastically. So before the original, you know, reclamation plan that was submitted back in oh-one, oh-two, shows final contours that somewhat kinda match the existing grade that's already out there, which kinda makes you the assumption that they're gonna fill the site back in. This modification shows like a seventy to an eighty foot high wall, fifteen feet from the subdivision, properly of a subdivision. And so even though they're just modifying the existing plan, I felt that this is such a drastic change that it does require public notice to people within three to four feet if they so choose to, to request to have just an informational hearing. As long as the plan has all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and it meets our requirements as far as the submittal, you know, requirements, there really is no denying the reclamation plan. So the reclamation plan is completely one hundred percent separate from zoning or land use operations. So that all falls with the town of Springfield. When the town of Springfield made their decision to allow for some certain areas of the mine holds farm to be expanded into, there was no notification to any of these neighbors. So, you know, once I received the plan, I called the town chairman to kinda bring him up to speed, saying, hey, this is what's gonna happen when I send out these notices. And those phone calls and those emails, I have to direct back to you. So I'm just kinda giving you a warning. And so we could go Tuesday night, they had a little over a hundred people show up at their town meeting, and they were very upset with regards to a few different issues, not just the reclamation plan, but some other comprehensive type of zoning issues, such as the town opting out of county zoning.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah. Yeah, from what I understand, the vote a year and a half ago to opt out, I think was within five votes, from what I understand, talking with some other people, so it was very close, very contentious. And there really weren't that many people even notified to begin with, so there might have been a room full of maybe a hundred and thirty, you know, just as an example out of a town that's...
Cause the whole, each town voter gets to vote on...
Yeah, so...
Yes, it's whoever's at the meeting, it's at the annual meeting, whoever is present gets to vote, and that's it.
So, yeah, so right now, the town of Springfield has made the decision to notify me to back off on any further review of the plan, but unfortunately, I'm not in a position to do that. I can't, because like I told, like I mentioned before, it's completely independent of zoning authority. And so I need to have a conversation with the town chairman, the town clerk, to say, hey, unless I get word from the operator to stop and rescind the whole application, then I will completely stop. But I can't, I can't, you know, just stop because of, hey, we need to rethink this. It's like, oh, we're kinda past that point now. So it'll be interesting to see how this plays out the next few weeks. And there are some timeline constraints on my end. I can't have a public hearing go sooner than thirty days of what is requested, and I can't have a public hearing go later than sixty days of whatever is requested. So I think I'm looking at probably the first part of July is the final drop dead date. And the hearing that I'm conducting will most likely be at the town hall, and it's just for informational purposes only. It's nothing exciting, I know that's what not everybody wants to talk about. It's, you know, some seeding, it's vegetation, it's contours, it's high walls. Plans can be changed. The other thing that everybody needs to understand is the reclamation ordinance does not force the landowner or the operator to reclaim in a certain timeframe. This is just a plan. It could be a hundred years before they start reclaiming. There's no requirements.
Wait, so that's a state statute?
Yep.
It's very wired down. It has a good intention, but it was really watered down so that it only gets reclaimed when the landlord wants it to.
So, yeah, that's kind of a, even though the town have opted out of county zoning, I still have my hands full with the reclamation plan.
Interesting meeting. I suppose we should have a final motion here.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
And we got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for adjourn.